Time is now 9:33 a.m. and a form of the board is present State Board of Education meeting of February 8, 2022 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Dr. Shelley Holt to do a presentation.
Okay.
For African American history for Black History Month.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to permit Dr. Holt to present in honor of Black History Month. Do we have a second?
Support.
We have support from Dr. Pugh. Any discussion? Hearing none, if we could have, sorry.
Sorry.
Please.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate Tiffany reached out ahead of time of this meeting to mention that she was going to make this request, and I appreciate that. I would, I'm inclined to support it because it is time-specific, but I would just like to remind the board that we do have an agenda planning process, and I would hope that members would use that process when requesting agenda items be added, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Where is this going to be added?
This would be added right before state federal legislative update. Any other discussions? Hearing none, Marilyn, a roll call vote, please.
Just on the amendment?
It is on the amendment. That's correct.
Lipton? You're, Lipton? You're muted, Ellen.
She can't hear us, I don't think.
She can't hear us?
Oh, here we go.
Ellen, can you hear us?
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, maybe she can hear us now.
Ellen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now, thank you.
Okay, sorry for the technical difficulties. This is a vote to amend the agenda to add presentation in honor of Black History Month, and I'm starting to take the roll call vote. Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yeah.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Are there any other motions to amend the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to add a resolution to let parents speak to item K.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second?
Support.
A second from Mr. McMillan. Any discussion thereof? Hearing none? I'm sorry? Any discussion thereof?
I can wait.
Okay. Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
No.
Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Any other motions to amend the agenda? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote on the agenda as amended.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. At this time, Marilyn Snyder, our State Board Executive, will introduce the members to the State Board of Education.
Yes, you have just been listening to the State Superintendent Michael, Dr. Michael Rice, who serves as the Chair of the State Board of Education. And as we go around the table, to his left is Dr. Cassandra Albridge, President of the Board from Dearborn, and Dr. Pamela Pugh, Vice President of the Board from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, Secretary from West Bloomfield, she is in the room, she is sitting up above by the risers to Dr. Rice's left. Ms. Nikki Snyder, State Board of Education Legislative Committee member from Dexter. The Teacher of the Year is Ms. Leah Porter. She is a third-grade teacher at Wilcox Elementary School in the Holt Public Schools. And then we go across the table, and joining us virtually is the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor, Ms. Stephanie O'Day. She's representing the Governor as an ex-official member, and she is joining us via technology. And then Judy, Dr. Judith Pritchett, she's the Board's Association Delegate and State Board of Education Legislative Committee member from Washington Township. Mr. Jason Strahan, Board's Legislative Committee Member from Novi. Next to me, Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. And joining us virtually, Ellen, Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton, Chair of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee. She's from Huntington Woods. She's joining us virtually in accordance with the American, the ADA, American Disabilities Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Welcome to Stephanie O'Day, our K-12 Policy Advisor to the Governor. Again, it is Ms. O'Day's first meeting representing Governor Whitmer as an ex-official member of the State Board of Education. Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant has a new employee to introduce. I'm very pleased that he will be introducing this new leader in the department.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Rice. It is more my pleasure to introduce Precious Boone as the new Director of our Administrative Law Office.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Precious Boone. I am the Director of the Office of Administrative Law. I come to you from the Office of Attorney General, where I served as the head, Section Head of Education. I was there for three years, and I'm happy to make this transition. I'm very excited about my new role. The Office of Administrative Law, as you may know, deals with making sure that individuals, educators, and school boards get their due process rights. So, our office reviews appeals for property transfers, for state aid deduction decisions, for teacher tenure decisions. So, we run the gambit here, and we also review and promulgate all the administrative rules for the Department of Education. So, quite a bit on our plate. I am stepping into the role of someone who held the position for 35 years. Big shoes to feel, but I am up to the task, and I'm very honored to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone, and welcome.
Thank you.
Deputy Superintendent Dr. Scott Kennigschnack will introduce virtually two experienced Michigan Department of Education employees serving in new roles. Dr. K?
Yes, good morning, all, and thank you, Dr. Rice, for allowing us to share some great news with some new staff in our P-20 Division. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Amanda Stole. Amanda is our new Special Assistant within the Division. When we interviewed Amanda, she said she grew up at MDE. Amanda brings a wealth of experience at the department, has been with the department for over 20 years in a variety of roles. And so, Amanda, would you like to say a few words about yourself, please?
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Kennigschnack, for the introduction. I'm so honored to be here and sharing with you and State Board members. Scott took all my thunder. I was going to share how I grew up here at the Department of Education for nearly 20 years and have held roles as Secretary, Department Technician, Analyst, Specialist, and now the Special Assistant to Dr. Kennigschnack. So, I'm very excited. I've worked with many of the offices across the department in policy analysis, grant administration, and review, and worked with educators and stakeholders across the state on many collaborative endeavors and initiatives, specifically around technology and youth development and early childhood. So, I'm very excited to be in this new role and being able to share with all of you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Amanda. I would also like to introduce Rebecca McIntyre. Rebecca McIntyre is our interim Deputy Director with the Office of Special Education. Rebecca comes to us again from within the department, but she brings a wealth of experience from the field, over 20-plus years in the field. And so, Rebecca, would you like to share a few words about yourself?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kennigschnack. Thank you for the opportunity to meet the State Board of Education. I'm Rebecca McIntyre. I come to you today as the interim Deputy Director in the Office of Special Education. I will be having and enjoying thoroughly some very close work with Michigan School for the Deaf and doing a lot of work with our grant-funded initiatives right now. So, I am still serving also in our role in the Office of Special Education for the Program Accountability Unit. I'm the supervisor for that unit. We do work with state complaints, due process complaints. I work with Precious in the promulgation of Michigan administrative rules for special education and everything else that's policy-related, putting out our guidance documents and such. I do come to the department with background experience in working with the, at the intermediate school district level and at the local school district level, as well as a teacher. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations to Ms. Stole and Ms. McIntyre on your new positions, Ms. Boone as well, and we roll forward. The public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. Provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage, again at www.michigan.gov/MDE. First item on the committee of the whole agenda is educational updates related to COVID. It is a relatively brief update, which I will share now. In Michigan, since our last State Board of Education meeting four weeks ago, the number of COVID-19 cases has risen from 1.68 million to 2.02 million, an increase of 337,984,000 cases, or approximately 20%, with the number of deaths increasing from 27,878 to 30,417, a rise of 2,539 deaths, or roughly 9%. Our vaccination rates continue to climb slowly but steadily. As of last Friday, 69.6% of Michigan residents ages 16 and above have received at least an initial vaccination, with 47.2% of students 12 to 15 years old and 25.6% of students 5 to 11 years old with at least an initial vaccination. As we increase the percentages of students vaccinated, we reduce disruptions to in-person instruction and adverse impact on student achievement as a result. In total, more than 14.8 million doses of vaccine have been administered to Michigan residents. Worldwide, 10.1 billion vaccine doses have been administered. It is with the vaccination of significant portions of our population that we are going to be able to minimize COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Unvaccinated individuals are far more likely to be vulnerable than our vaccinated individuals for sickness, hospitalization, and death. According to the Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Resource Center, worldwide, there have been more than 397 million COVID cases and more than 5.75 million COVID-related deaths as of last night. Nationally, there have been 76.8 million cases and 905,000 deaths. With 19.3% of the world's cases and 15.7% of the world's deaths associated with COVID, the U.S. continues to lead the world in both categories. In our layering of mitigation strategies recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, vaccination is clearly of paramount importance. The growing number of Michiganders who are getting vaccinated are protecting not simply themselves, but others as well. You're helping to reduce sickness, hospitalizations, and death, and to increase the number of days and hours that our children and staff are in person in school. The layering of mitigation strategies requires masks, social distancing, proper hygiene, and at times, testing, quarantining, and isolating as well. That is my brief report, Board. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, we have a quite full agenda, and I'm happy to continue to move on. Yes, ma'am.
Just for sake of being a broken record, you said that unvaccinated people are more likely to be vulnerable than vaccinated, but the truth behind that is if you are already foundationally vulnerable, generally speaking, you have to be given the choice to get a vaccination, and it may or may not make you more or less vulnerable. So, it's not, the science behind that is, that's an opinion, it's not fact. And when people who are vulnerable continue to hear this over and over and over again from physicians and systems, they're not being empowered to make a decision in light of their body and their health. So, I just, I'll continue to sound like a broken record because that is what the field of science is. It's a number of opinions, and that should lead to choice.
So, I appreciate you sharing that. I would encourage any person prior to getting vaccinated to have a conversation with his or her medical practitioner and to be advised about whether there are any particular medical vulnerabilities that would contraindicate their vaccination. In the absence thereof, I think the medical profession broadly writ feels that it's better to be vaccinated than not. There are exceptions, as you point out. There's no question to that, but to that. Are there any other questions or comments? Dr. Pugh?
I'll just make a comment, and for the sake of keeping the broken record moving. Just pointing out, you know, I thank you for the comments that you've made and making sure that the public is aware that COVID is still alive and well. We are happy to see that the rates are going down, and that people are still getting vaccinated, and just really emphasizing the use of masks, whether or not you are or are not vaccinated. The only thing that I will point out is that COVID deaths during this last wave have been higher than any other of the waves that we've seen. So, COVID is still real, even though we are seeing the less severe variants. But, again, I just will reiterate the masking and the vaxing, and definitely doing the vaccinations under the care of a doctor. I do agree.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder, to you, and then Mr. McMillan.
And just further on masking, we have a student here in the state of Michigan who, after a loss in a basketball game, was then encouraged by new athletic director and vice principal under a coach to participate in a practice that was significant, extra kills, extra work as a result, forced to wear a mask, underwent hypoxemia, and is now dealing with brain damage as a result of it. We can have these updates, we can have these disagreements, but the outcome of these policies is absolutely dangerous.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Ms. McMillan, to you.
Yeah, I would just say that it would be good to also include that the science clearly shows that natural immunity is superior to vaccination. So, I'd want to throw that in as well.
Okay, well, that is not the science to which I'm.
It is this, okay. It is a science that's clear.
Happy to have you state that, but I'm not happy to have it be put in my mouth. Are there any other?
I'm not trying to put it in your mouth.
Are there any other questions?
I'm just trying to state the facts.
I'd like to clarify. It's not the science you're choosing to base the policy and your monthly updates on, but it is science.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is Presentation of Fall 2021 Child Care Stabilization Grant. This presentation is an overview of the Fall 2021 Child Care Stabilization Grant funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to stabilize and support childcare providers. This is an informational presentation, and no board action is required. We welcome our presenters who are joining us via technology, Dr. Scott Kennigschnack, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 Systems and Student Transitions, and Ms. Lisa Brule-Walraven, Director of the Office of Educate, of Child Care Development. Presenters, there will be a PowerPoint presentation. Welcome.
Great, thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to the State Board of Ed for giving us the opportunity to provide an update on the round seven of our Child Care Stabilization Grant. So, we're calling this round the Fall 2021 Child Care Stabilization Grant. If you follow Child Care and Child Care Funding, the federal government appropriated about $1.4 billion to the state of Michigan, which was then appropriated through our own state budget, and that happened in early October. Given that, given that approval or appropriation, Lisa and her team and many external partners went to work and have since processed almost 6,000 grants to childcare providers totaling a little bit over $350 million. In the presentation, Lisa certainly is going to share some thanks to folks. I want to thank people as well. Prior to that, this was really a Herculean effort in getting the dollars to providers in a timely manner. So, thank you to Lisa, thank you to her team, and thank you to the many partners that she's going to reference here in a little bit. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. She's going to provide some more details to you around this round of grants. We'll hear from a provider who received some of these dollars and what these dollars did for her childcare business, and then Lisa will talk about next steps. So, Lisa?
Hey, Scott. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us this morning to share about this great opportunity that we were able to work on to get funding to providers. In Michigan, we want to make sure that all families have access to safe, quality, affordable childcare that meets their needs, regardless of how old their children are, where they live, what their family income is, or what their race or ethnicity is. And throughout the public health emergency, it has certainly spotlighted the critical role that childcare plays in supporting children, families, businesses, and the economy as a whole. Childcare is essential for communities to thrive and for individuals to be able to return to work. So, we've been really working to ensure that we're reducing stresses that the pandemic has caused in the childcare market. Parents and families are having trouble finding care that meets their needs. Programs are having trouble staying open because they're not able to find staff to meet the needs. So, these grants or these opportunities have really presented an opportunity to rebuild that childcare system, to support children, parents, and providers to have the access to care that they need. We engaged an enormous amount of stakeholders throughout the process of developing this round of grants, and they were really critical in terms of us being able to be successful. They helped us develop an equitable funding formula. They helped us identify ways to simplify and update our application process. They helped us translate materials to ensure that all providers had access to information. They increased our capacity to provide technical assistance and support with the submission of applications. And they helped us review grant applications so that we could get payments to providers in a timely manner. So, again, without their support, this big effort would have been really impossible for us. In addition to the child development and care staff within the Department of Education who have supported the ongoing grant work across all of the rounds, we had numerous partners, and this is a visual to show you how enormous the support was from stakeholders across the state to help us meet our goal. We could not have been successful without this entire team and partners working together. Some of them are joining us virtually today to get that thank you through this presentation. A few are in the room, but I wanted, like Scott, to definitely say a big thank you to every entity that you see represented here or in the room or who is participating virtually. We could not have developed the application, reviewed all of the applications, completed our reporting, or gotten to all of the providers without your help. So, everyone on here was a tremendous asset to this work. We wanted to share a little bit of the grant data with you, just so that you could see the impact that this has had in the childcare industry. Scott already mentioned, but we did award over $365 million in grants to 5,890 licensed childcare providers across the state. And we learned a lot from this application process, and that's what I'm hoping to share with you this morning. So, here's the data on the grants that were awarded. You can see that out of 7,926 licensed providers across the state, we received applications from 5,910 providers, or about 76% of the providers who were eligible. This gives you a visual snapshot of how many grants were awarded in our four early childhood support network regions that we divide our work up across the state. So, it shows you by provider type, by the region, as well as the average grant awards that went to each of those provider types across the state. A big piece of our application process was to ensure equitable access and to support providers who were serving children that are low-income or may have care that is typically harder to access or find. So, we had bonus categories, and these demonstrate those bonus categories and how many providers answered yes to meeting this need for children and families. So, we were focused on care for infants and toddlers, children who receive childcare subsidy, children who have special needs, offer non-traditional care hours, and participating in Great Start to Quality, which is our quality rating improvement system. This was also an opportunity for us to gather some information about the early childhood workforce. We definitely have a shortage in terms of the number of individuals who are coming back and working in programs. What that means for children and families is that programs that are open are open for fewer hours, and they may not have as many of their classrooms open. Therefore, they're not able to serve as many children and families as they have in the past. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to learn about the number of staff who are currently working, as well as the vacancies that exist. So, this grant opportunity awarded bonus dollars for those who are currently working and allowed for programs to request funding for vacancies to help fill those vacancies. So, we have about a 20% vacancy rate for full-time staff and a 34% vacancy for part-time With those reductions in the number of hours that programs are open or the limited classrooms that are open, we're starting to see waiting lists. That means that, again, families are not able to access or locate care that meets their needs. So, we're going to continue to work on strategies for helping to reduce these wait lists. The Office of Child Care, which is the office at the federal level where our funding comes from, identified these 10 counties as our areas of highest need. And we are going to be reporting back to the Office of Child Care about the grants that have been awarded in these specific counties. Overall, 58% of our grant funds were awarded in these 10 counties. Again, you can see the type of providers that those grant funds went to and the total dollar award of those grants. Scott mentioned that we have a message from a childcare provider who actually received these funds. This program is a program that is participating in Great Start to Quality or is STAR-rated and is a nonprofit early learning center that was formed in 1984. and is a nonprofit early learning center that was formed in 1984 by innovators at the department in the Lansing School District. From its location near downtown Lansing, EC3, which is the name of the program, currently serves 105 children from 90 families in the greater Lansing area. Its infant, toddler, and preschool programs operate within 10 classrooms, and its staff of 44 includes 27 full-time professionals, 15 who have been with the program for more than five years. So I really want to send out a thank you to Liz and her team for putting this clip together.
As soon as the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law, EC3 began preparing for the changes it would bring. We knew it would take some time for the Michigan Legislature to finalize the appropriations, and we were thrilled that they largely adopted the MDE's proposed plan for distribution. Providers statewide, including EC3, received much-needed support from the department in the early months of the pandemic, and it was evident that the MDE leadership was motivated to do right by us. Many town hall meetings and webinars later, the department issued an elegantly streamlined application process so that all Michigan early learning providers could access life-saving funding through childcare stabilization grants. For EC3, these funds couldn't have come at a better time. Because of a severe staffing shortage, we had already begun to overhaul our wage structure in order to attract teachers who might otherwise go to work for the public schools. When the staff bonus money came through, including funds to attract new hires, it really made a difference in the lives of these professionals. The grant funds have also been a godsend already to families whose children are enrolled at EC3. As COVID has closed several classrooms, we have been able to use some of these funds to enable needy families to get a break on tuition. Plans are underway to use funds towards EC3's insurance payments, necessary equipment upgrades, and much-needed PPE for both staff and children. Because the MDE has worked so hard to streamline even the reporting process for this grant funding, EC3 and its contemporaries will be able to apply for the second half of funding in March without missing a beat. In turn, we will provide the continuity and stability that our children need and our families deserve.
In terms of next steps, we are working to gear up for another round of the childcare stabilization grants. We're beginning to collect reports from providers who have received grants to identify how they're utilizing that grant funding. We're providing data that we've collected from providers to the Federal Office of Childcare as part of our reporting requirements. We'll begin monitoring a certain percentage of grants to ensure proper utilization of the funds. And then we'll be re-engaging all of the stakeholders who helped us with our fall application prior to the next release so that, again, we can make improvements and modifications to best support children, families, and providers. If you're interested in learning more about our county-level distribution, we do have that posted at our website where you can see the link here. I encourage you to visit that. While this project and the Round Seven Grants have been a really big lift, we have been truly amazed to see how the field came together to support the childcare industry across the state and are looking forward to that opportunity again in March to get these funds out to providers. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Koenig-Schneck, Ms. Brewer-Wallraven for that presentation. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Lipton, thank you.
That was an amazing presentation. Thank you so much. You really hit on, I think, some important issues that we're hearing about in terms of the childcare shortage. So thank you so much for that. A question that I have is, if in fact all of the centers that you've identified are able to fully staff themselves, in other words, find and recruit the providers that you've shown gaps, would there still be an unmet need? Or do we have enough of the infrastructure to actually handle all of the projected needs for the state?
I'll start maybe high level and kick it to Lisa. So this next round of grants, for my take, the answer is no. The infrastructure is not complete yet. This next round of grants is really aimed at solidifying and building that infrastructure. Part of that is with startup grants, to your point. And so I don't feel that the infrastructure is there yet. Certainly, these dollars help. They're intended to help. And I'll kick it to Lisa to provide some specifics on that.
I agree with Scott. Prior to the public health emergency, we had shortages in certain areas of the state in regards to care being available to families that meet their needs. So as we've gone through the public health emergency, we've lost some providers. So we're still trying to build back the number of providers, ensure that those are operating, are operating at full capacity, and then encouraging other new providers to join in to cover those areas where we are lacking. So we still have work to do, but we do have opportunities with this funding to make sure that we can help meet those needs.
Thank you. And just one quick follow-up. So do you have a sense of how much funding would be required to be at, you know, in a perfect world, full capacity and where you want to be in terms of slots? And then a dollar figure on that? Or is that just something that can't be ascertained?
We have not done that estimate in a while, but I can tell you it would be a very large figure.
Okay.
But certainly something that we think about. You know, part of the childcare industry is supported through childcare subsidy dollars that the department is the lead for, as well as private pay dollars. So it's a complicated formula to figure out.
Great. Thank you so, so much again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh and Ms. Snyder.
I think to Board Member Lipton's point and then just a question in general. I don't know if Michigan League of Public Policy, if you all have worked with them, but I think it was them who put out some really great county-level data that... And I don't know, was that mentioned here? I might have missed. Oh, okay, you're familiar. And just wondering if you all have looked at that, and that kind of like tells where the needs are. And maybe you built the need here based on that. But just thoughts on how you're working with that and using that as a data point.
Dr. Kay and Ms. Brewer-Wallraven, would you like to address that?
Sure. Yes, we are aware of the Michigan League of Public Policy data points that they put out. There's a group who works closely with the department in terms of looking at the childcare needs across the state. We'll be using that data for the childcare supply-building opportunities that Scott mentioned just a few moments ago. We have $100 million that was appropriated to the department, which will be our next big effort in terms of addressing the childcare shortages and supports that are needed for the field.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder?
Lisa, just a couple of questions. I'll ask one. The first one, is there any language in the grants that attach to vaccines, masks, or the pandemic in any way?
No, there wasn't.
Okay. So no language in applications or the foundation of the grant? It's all solely based on childcare?
Correct.
Okay. Providers, to be more specific, sorry. Are there any strings attached or spending guidelines for these grant dollars? So if you get them, you apply for them, you get them. Do you have a document you could share with us that, say, the provider gets in terms of what these dollars are used for?
Yes, we have documents that are available to share that information with you, and I'd be happy to get them out to everyone. We're following the federal guidelines that came from the Office of Childcare related to the allowable uses of the grants. So that's where we got that guidance for providers.
And is there... So you have allowable uses for the dollars. Is there follow-up on that? Is there... How does that work when a provider gets a grant, knows the allowable uses for those dollars? Is there reporting tools like you've described in this in terms of being able to see that that has been used for that purpose?
Yes. We released the reporting templates at the beginning of February for providers who had received the grants. They have a period of time to complete those reports and spend the funds. It does ask them to tell us how they used their grant dollars, and we will be doing some follow-up monitoring on those reports that are submitted. We'll be able to look at a certain percentage of those grant awards to ensure that funds were used appropriately.
Can you send us the allowable uses paperwork?
Yes. I will work to get that to Marilyn so she can get it out to all of you.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder, any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Pugh, please.
In follow-up to Board Member Snyder's question, you're not saying that it can't be used for those items. I think the question that Nikki was asking is, do they have to be spent for those items? Or are there stipulations?
Do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I was just assuming allowable uses means that it does have to be spent on that, meaning if it's not attached to vaccines, masks, or pandemic measures, then it can't be. That's what I would assume based on what you guys have just said.
Okay. That was my understanding of the question, too.
If there are no other questions or comments from board members, I'd like to thank our childcare and development staff within the department who have done a terrific job in the last two years during the pandemic. I'd also like to thank thousands of providers across the state for what they are doing, not only to help develop our young people, but help to really re-strengthen our economy as we come more fully out of this pandemic. So thank you to all of you. Dr. Koenig-Schneck, Ms. Brewer-Wallraven, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it, and we appreciate you. I'm sorry, Ms. Tilly, the benediction to you.
I just wanted to add, when I was younger, I was a, and I've said this, an ECE teacher at Joyland Achievement Center. And I've also talked about, you know, the fact that ECE teachers only make as much as, you know, a fast food worker. They really deserve to have a raise, especially during the pandemic. They work so hard, and they are so needed right now for our parents. So I just think that we need to bring, and I know we're K through 12, but we definitely need to bring more attention to not just our K through 12 teachers needing raises, but also our ECE teachers in the state. Thank you.
You bet. You bet. We agree with that without any footnote in there. Thank you. Next item on the committee of the whole agenda is Presentation on the Revised Model Asthma Policy. A revision of the State Board of Education model policy on the management of asthma in schools is being proposed to include new evidence related to the treatment of asthma, best practices for managing asthma in schools, and new resources for school personnel, students, and families. Following a period of public comment, the board will be asked to approve the model policy on the management of asthma in schools during its May Camp 2022 meeting. We welcome our presenters, Mr. Kyle Dorat, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Dr. Diane Bolzinski, Director of Health and Nutrition Services, Mr. John Dowlin, Asthma Program Manager, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And good morning, board. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the revised policy with you today. Since the previous model, since the board's previous model policy on management of asthma in schools was developed and approved back in 2005, the federal asthma management guidelines have been updated twice, once in 2007 and again in 2020. So there's important resources and updates that have been developed since 2005, which is obviously a significant amount of time ago. And so those changes and best practices and resources have been incorporated in the draft revision that's before you today. And as Dr. Rice mentioned, we would like to take that out to public comment to ultimately bring back to the board for approval later this year. We've been working closely with our partners at MDEHS and appreciate John's work and his team's work on helping to get this revision to where it's at today. And we'll turn it over to John and Diane to lead the presentation.
Thanks, Kyle. Thank you for having me today to talk about the work we've been doing in terms of revising the asthma model policy. And again, I'm John Dowlin. I work with the asthma program. I'm the asthma program manager here at Department of Health and Human Services. We're excited about these revisions, and we think these updates will make this policy much stronger. So you could do the next slide. Yep, that's it. Okay. So the asthma program, and Kyle mentioned this, the asthma program worked with its partners to develop the original version in 2004, and it was adopted in 2005. And again, there's been no updates since 2005. Next slide. In those 17 years since the asthma policy was adopted, there has been new evidence related to the treatment of asthma, best practices for managing asthma in schools, and new resources for school personnel, students, and families. In 2007, the National Heart and Blood Lung Institute, or NHLBI, updated their asthma guidelines and called in the expert panel, Report III or EPR III guidelines. And this was a full guideline update. And then more recently, NHLBI has released the 2020 Focus Updates. And those just cover six areas to be used with the EPR III guidelines. So that was a partial update. Also, the School-Based Allergy Asthma and Anaphylaxis Management Program has been released. And this was in 2016. So the goal is to improve the health and school-related outcomes for children with asthma using school-based partnerships that focus on integrated care coordination amongst family, clinicians, and school nurses. SAMPRO advocates for components of integrated schools and specifically school nurses within the asthma care team. So they have a creation of circle of support among families, clinicians, and school nurses centered around the child with asthma, creation and transmission of asthma management plans to schools, and a comprehensive asthma education plan for school personnel, and comprehensive environmental asthma plan to assess remediate asthma triggers at home and school. When SAMPRO was first developed in 2016, it was specific to asthma. Recently, they have added the allergies in anaphylaxis piece to SAMPRO. And then the last, well, the last two consist, the consensus statement for the core tenets of chronic condition management in schools. So this outlines seven core tenets and three foundational supports for school stakeholders to establish a common framework and guide an integrated collective and equitable approach to chronic condition management in schools. And then the standards of care provides a consistent standard for supporting all students with chronic conditions that ensures equitable opportunity for student success. Let me next slide. Thank you. So the asthma program worked directly with Avilia Jankowski, the state school nurse consultant. And Avilia and I kind of coordinated the revision along with our school asthma action group. This is a group that's been together for quite a while that advises us and helps us address the school issues going on with asthma. And the action group provided content, feedback, and helped us through the revision process to the point where we have now this full update. And on the slide, you can see the organizations that are part of the action group. So I want to just spend a little bit of time highlighting some of the major updates. I've already mentioned the consistent statement and core tenets along with the standards of care document. Also, we strengthened the asthma education section. We provided information on specific trainings that would be available, included links within the document. We've also added some quit smoking along with e-cigarettes, but quit smoking resources were also added. There's important information included on medical emergency response planning that outlines actions that will occur should a medical situation arise. It also indicates specific responsibilities for members of the medical emergency response team in order to provide medical care for an ill or injured student or staff member. There's improved information on medication access for those students who self-carry and those who aren't old enough or mature enough to self-administer their own asthma medication. We provide more information on triggers and included suggestions for addressing them. And then current resources have been added, again, as well as links to those resources. So for next steps, again, it's, we'll disseminate the plan for public comment. We'll analyze those comments and feedback, and then we'll bring back that information to the board for discussion approval. And I just want to thank you again for the time and the opportunity to kind of share this information and the model policy provision. And of course, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowlin, Dr. Bozinski, Mr. Doran. We appreciate your presentation and your leadership on this issue. Board members, Ms. Snyder?
I just, I'm curious, in terms of old standards or standards that we'll keep or standards that we're including, is there any acknowledgement of humidity as a trigger for asthma?
I'm trying to remember. We do have a lot of triggers listed, but I will, it may not, that's a good question because it is an issue.
CDC discusses humidity as a significant trigger. The NIH acknowledges that humidity, when we're wearing masks, is significantly higher. So for people who have asthma, though, there's a risk for the trigger with viruses, there's also a risk with humidity when they're wearing masks. So I think that kind of puts us back at the most important mitigation with COVID and our pandemic is to stay home if you're sick, especially for people, to protect people who have asthma. But again, I continue to circle back around to understanding how vulnerability really impacts each individual student and each individual. So I just want to know that as we think about asthma in schools and this revision, are we acknowledging that? Because it's a significant part of triggering asthma. And from one student to the next, it may be different. You know, your trigger for your asthma might be different than my trigger for my asthma. And so to acknowledge it gives these students the space to be vulnerable in their unique way. They may need to choose not to wear a mask, they may not have to. It just depends.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other questions or comments of state board members?
And thank you for coming. Thank you for having this presentation. Your hair color has changed a bit.
It hasn't. Thank you for noticing.
Of course, I dyed mine. This, thank you for the presentation. I'm so happy that we're all here together having this conversation. And to Nikki's point, some of the, you know, just doing that deeper environmental dive, just making sure that we're continuing to move those worlds together as well. And I know that some of the things that we were looking at more closely was things like building conditions of the schools when we talk about humidity and mold and all of those factors. But product use or an IPM, integrated pest management. And just wondering if you all are working with Healthy Homes? If you're working with like University of Michigan, their environment, no public health, but also the environment and the sustainability offices, but really hopefully coming more closely linked with the outcomes as well as those environmental exposures. And I know that we had started to make those linkages years ago. I saw a little bit of it in the presentation and then definitely knowing that we need to connect this health condition that's known to be one of the leading causes of school absenteeism to this discussion, but also just making that well-rounded connection. And how's that coming, is my question?
Yes, and so we do, at least in terms of our, the asthma program and the partners we work with, that we are connecting with indoor air quality organizations and outdoor air as well. So, you know, certainly we're in communications with EPA. There's two Healthy Homes coalitions within the state, so local coalitions that we connect with. We try and connect with, or work some with Wayne State and some of the work they're doing, as well as U of M. We have connections with their CAFE program as well. So we're trying to take those things in consideration because those, the environmental piece is such a big one, indoor and outdoor, in having those considerations, so.
That's good to hear. I mean, I know the funding's not always there. I mean, and to Nikki's point, you always want to know what new things that we introduce, you know, what the consequences are. You know, of course, we have to introduce some things because it's an emergency. But hoping that we have the funding and the resources and the support to be able to research and look at all of that stuff. But we know that this is a very important topic, so good to see that they have great people that are staying close to this issue and that we're bringing it all together.
We've got some great partners that are involved in this.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. McMillan?
So does each, thank you, does each school, are they required to have a policy on asthma? Management of asthma in their school currently?
So this is not a, no, there's no requirement. These are the model policy best practices.
Okay, so there's not one that they currently have to have, nor this one? So this is a, if this goes through and it's approved by the state board, it's a suggestion?
Correct.
And although, are there ever times when, and maybe not just the asthma policy, but where grants or funding is tied to whether or not you are implementing a state board of education-approved policy?
I, we don't have any funding that we're giving, so I can't speak to it from my personal experience, but I haven't heard of anything like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan. Other board members, questions, comments? Once, twice? Dr. Pugh, to you.
How has the reporting been, or how has the, at the local level? Has that improved, has that, as far as reporting and the management plans as well?
From the local level, one of the things that has happened over time is we've lost a lot of the asthma coalitions. So it used to be, quite a few years ago now, but there was a lot of local asthma coalitions who were working. And at one point, we provided funding. Unfortunately, cuts kind of took that away. We still tried to connect with them as much as possible, but over time, so we've lost that. So it's a lot of just kind of trying to engage various organizations and look for opportunities to collaborate, connect, whether it's working with schools or other areas. So we're trying to coordinate as much as we can and connect with folks. But at least in terms of the local level, there's less, there is, we've got a group Detroit that we're working with, the Asthma Collaborative of Detroit, that has been.
I remember Flint used to have a big network.
They had a, yeah.
Kent County.
Yep, yep.
And I know we're in, these last two years have been a little bit different, but do we still see asthma as like a leading cause of absenteeism?
I think it's still part of one of the higher, yeah. I mean, this, this period in the pandemic has kind of changed things. There's been, there's been less hospitalizations, ED visits, there has been some things like that. But asthma's still a big piece of it. I think, you know, a lot of kids were home for a while, there wasn't the flus, there wasn't the colds least in that first year, so there was changes along those lines. But it's still, still an issue. And I think school attendance is a big piece of this for any chronic disease, but making sure that asthma's well-controlled so those kids can stay in classrooms.
I would add to that, that would be why asthma is one of our metrics for our state education plan. And we have our state school nurse who is shared between our department and the Department of Health and Human Services. And she has a network of school nurses, which is growing because of the additional funding that's happening. So where there aren't coalitions, she is able to make connections with school nurses to help move this type of work forward.
Dr. Bozinski mentions the metrics as a third goal of the state strategic education plan, improving the health, safety, and wellness of our young people. And you may recall encouraging the addition of particular metrics into that plan. Ms. Tilly as well encouraged the metrics, particular metrics to be included in that plan. But there was a particular interest in asthma and lead-related metrics during our discussion, consistent in part with this conversation. Thank you, Ms. Tilly, to you.
Can we add to this bronchitis? Or is that too cumbersome? I kind of feel like as somebody who suffers from both, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand, asthma and bronchitis? Or it can go hand in hand?
Right, and usually any sort of virus or flu, colds can be triggers and definitely. But yeah, I think we can make note.
Thank you.
I would be remiss, I know.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
I know Board Member Snyder touched on it, but does this address masking in pandemics?
No.
Of asthma, I mean.
We didn't mention in the model policy anything about masking in relation to the pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
Claire, I'm asking you to revisit that and include it. I think that as we move forward, regardless of how any type of pandemic, virus, flu, or cold season is managed by whoever's in charge at the time, there can't be a mask mandate for these kids. If we want them back in school, we need to understand that this may very well be a trigger for them greater than dealing with a virus. And so they have to be given the opportunity to choose. So I would really consider that based on humidity being a significant trigger for many people who have asthma, so.
So just a point of clarification. So what I thought I heard you say was the model policy was silent relative to both pandemic and masks. Is that correct?
You did not mention that.
Okay, and your suggestion is that there be a specific inclusion related to masks?
I think that we should be clear at this point in time that there should not be a mask mandate for kids who have asthma. If it's imperative, if it impairs their ability to manage asthma, it should not be a mandate for them.
We have a, we have a public comment period, do we not?
Yes, correct.
Okay, we have the opportunity to engage the public in what the model policy is currently and to get public comment on the sufficiency of that model policy and whether it needs to be amended.
I would also just, again, refer back to the CDC and NIH's understanding of triggers for asthma and the humidity being significantly increased when you wear a mask. You know, we should definitely refer to that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
I would just say, you know, just for all of these type of issues, we would hope that children are talking to their physicians first and foremost. And so we don't want to put all of that onus here. And then the type of research that we're talking about, definitely, we would hope that the department would incorporate that into whatever it is that they're putting forward. But your points definitely should be considered and hopefully physicians are being consulted in those situations.
Yeah, always.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Anything more for our presenters? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Doran, Dr. Bozinski, Mr. Dowlin. We appreciate your, we appreciate your work and I look forward to seeing the next stage in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation on Michigan's top 10 education plan goal to provide adequate and equitable school funding. During this presentation, we will share information on Goal 8 of Michigan's top 10 strategic education plan to provide adequate and equitable school funding. This is an informational presentation and no board action is required. We welcome our presenter today, this morning, back by popular demand. In fact, he may have been so pleased with his last presentation that he didn't even get out of his seat. Mr. Kyle Doran, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Mr. Doran, we welcome, we welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to share briefly a little bit today about our Goal 8 metric around adequate and equitable school funding, as well as give a preview of the government's budget recommendation, which will be coming out shortly. So as you know, the providing adequate and equitable funding for schools is our number eight goal on our strategic education plan. As a, to give the board a sense of order, now that you've shared these numbers on previous meetings, for the 2020, 2021 school year, $19.4 billion supported public schools through a mixture of local, state, and federal revenue. And those are audited numbers from that year. And school districts just had to submit their audited financials for the 21, 22 school year in November. So we will have updated numbers for you at some point later this year. Previous board meetings, presentations on this goal and, you know, the metrics themselves focus on how the state is doing or how we're doing when we compare to the SFSFRC recommendations as compared to our funding for schools and the three. As you may remember, the SFRC recommended a base funding amount of $9,590 per student with specific substantial additional weights for students with disabilities, children in poverty, and English learners. SFRC also recommended further exploration into specific additional areas that the, around school funding. The SFRC did not have time or resources to delve deeper into, but recognized their impact. impact on global broader school funding and recommended additional studies in those So this, this current year, but this past summer, the government legislature agreed to the found historic investment in public schools. You see significant increases in the per pupil, bringing the foundational to 87 for pupil, significant increases in GSRP funding, funding for wraparound services, the $240 million, helping districts hire school nurses, social workers, counselors, and psychologists, and increased funding early on, and a beginning investment in the teacher shortage, and $1.67 million for Grow Your Own program. So that, that investment, that budget demonstrates the rising awareness that schools are still underfunded and need additional support to be able to support our students in a more effective manner. However, even with the historic school aid budget last year, public education was still underfunded, you know, by billions of dollars annually. And we've mentioned at the board table, Dr. Rice has mentioned before, six studies in six years have all come to that similar conclusion. They've come out in different ways, they're taken to account in factors, but ultimately schools are significantly underfunded in Michigan. This is the season for budget development, and the timeline here, board outlines a broad overview of what the next few months will look like in terms of developing the fiscal year 23 budget. Tomorrow, Governor Whitmer and partners at the state budget office will present her executive budget recommendation to a joint session of the House and Senate Appropriations Committees. Later on this month and in early February, state agency budgets will be presented to their respective appropriations subcommittees. So for the department, we will be presenting in the Senate, the House and Senate Appropriations Subcommittee to detail the budget proposals that will, you know, reflective of our department and school aid. And then in April, May, and in the, hopefully not into the summer, the appropriations subcommittees will draft and act on appropriations bills that will ultimately be taken up by the full chamber appropriations committees. As many of you know, that this process is more of a, of an art than a science, and these timelines are very broad because any given year, they look different for a whole host of factors. High-level details of the governor's executive budget requests have been reported on in the last few days, including the Detroit News article that Dr. Rice shared with the board over the weekend, so I'm going to share briefly some of the high-level investments that are being proposed in the governor's recommendation. So the area of educator recruitment and intention, $2.3 billion over four years is being proposed to recruit and retain educators and other school staff. Of that number, $1.5 billion is being recommended for retention bonuses for support staff over the next two years and for educators over the next four years. Additionally, $600 million is being proposed specifically for recruitment efforts to be focused on scholarships for future educators and stipends for student teachers, as well as expanding in district Grow Your Own programs to recruit and train teachers locally. $100 million for educator onboarding and mentoring programs, and additional $75 million for innovative approaches to addressing teacher retention needs at a local level. The governor's budget request will also request that the majority of that $2.3 billion be appropriated during the current fiscal year through supplemental appropriation. This is a vitally important request to give districts the time to recruit and retain educators before next school year starts. Dr. Rice, as he has shared his thoughts and the need for addressing the teacher shortage over the last three months, have been very focused on that we cannot wait until October 1 to be able to allow schools the opportunity to have the resources needed to address the teacher shortage, and we want to be able to hit the ground running as quickly as possible and give schools that opportunity, again, to recruit and retain educators for next And what we've deemed so far is ongoing operations, so this is kind of a, you know, base every year kind of funding. The governor's request will, the governor will request a $500 million increase in the per pupil foundation according to approximately $435 per student increase. If that is ultimately adopted by the legislature and signed into law, that investment will increase the per pupil allocation from its current 8,700 this year to $9,135 per student, moving us closer to the SFRC recommendation for the per pupil allocation. A $222 million increase in Section 31A list funding, a $150 million for special education funding, which would move the district universal rate from 31 to 36 percent. A slightly over $30 million increase for career and technical education programs, and then a 5 percent increase each for funding for English learners in rural districts and for intermediate school district operations. So these investments on the last two slides kind of underscore the governor's continued commitment to the SFRC recommendations. Ultimately, students, different students have different educational needs, and those needs require different funding. Continued investment in mental health services and programs for students, $120 million increase to Section 310 funding, which I had mentioned earlier in the budget for the current year, is that $240 million right now. $50 million increase to Section 31N funding for students' mental health services. Another $150 million increase to 31P funding for the Trails Program, which is a program out of the University of Michigan, and also an increase in our funding for our child analysis and health centers to expand the number of centers and school-based centers in our state. On the area of school safety, the governor's request will propose a $50 million for school safety grants, and $50 million to specifically support students who are who are threatened by violence. In the area of early childhood programs, again, you see another increase for GSRP, a $56 million, a $7 million increase for early on, for the early on program, and a $9.5 million increase for home visitation and great start collaboratives. Finally, a $50 million increase for before and after school programs. Ultimately, board, this is a great education, this is a great budget proposal for education. Coupled with the investments for the current school year that I mentioned earlier, you begin to see a trend that's going in a positive direction for public education funding in our state. This budget request will move Michigan closer to those SFRC recommendations that our goal is, is based on, and ultimately addressing the funding shortfalls that have been well documented in Michigan, and giving students and teachers, educators, the opportunity to have the resources needed to effectively support educators. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Garan. We appreciate your presentation. It is an outstanding budget recommendation in our legislature. It will not only move Goal Eight, to which you immediately refer, adequate and equitable school funding within our top 10 state strategic education plan, it will move every one of the state's top 10 state strategic education plan goals. GSRP expansion, early childhood education expansion, literacy, improving the improvement of health, safety, and wellness, the expansion of secondary school programming, the improvement of graduation rates, post-secondary credential rates, and as you've spent a considerable amount of time on, Goal Seven, the addressing of the teacher shortage, improvement in retention recommendations. We appreciate it being able to work closely with the governor, the governor's office, state budget office on these many proposals. They are very, very strong, and they deserve substantial consideration and quick dispensation by our state legislature. You mentioned the urgency of addressing the teacher shortage. Not that anybody's counting, but as you are aware, board, it's 40 days until spring. And as you are aware, board, we have called for the state legislature to act on recruitment and retention initiatives prior to the beginning of spring so that we have five months to begin to sink these initiatives into the soil of our state and to begin to have an impact on the next school year, so that next year's shortage is perhaps not quite as profound as this year's shortage, so that we can begin to strengthen the profession with these recruitment and retention initiatives. But we need these recruitment and retention initiatives approved in a budget supplemental. They need to be separated out and voted on in a budget supplemental. They should not wait until the summer to be approved so that they have no impact on next school year. They need to be voted on in a budget supplemental, and they need to be voted on quickly. The board is aware, we put forward recommendations to the legislature in November saying the same thing. We went back to the legislature in January with nine educational organizations saying the same thing. Some people have said, well, it's 40 days. The most biblical is to Dr. Pugh, it's 40 days until spring. How can you expect them to do anything in 40 days? Well, we know that the legislature can act quickly. When the legislature wants to act quickly, we saw it in December. We know the legislature can act quickly when it's important, and it's important for our public students that they act quickly to begin to rebuild this important profession in support of 1.4 million plus public schools built in the state. So Dr. Albridge, with that, I'm going to turn it to you for comments or questions, and then at the end, I'll share a couple of additional thoughts.
Well, I appreciate those comments, and I appreciate your presentation. It's always nice to see the, the budget recommendations boil down specific to things that we're working with on a regular basis. I just have a quick question. I, I remember when the SFRC came out with their recommendations, how long ago was that? It's been a few years, right?
Uh, yes, so it would have been.
January 2018.
2018. So in 2018, the recommendation was a base funding of 95, 90. Do we know what that would be when we factor in inflation for the last four years?
I do not. We would have to, we would have to upgrade that number. I do not know.
I think it would be, it would be helpful year after year when we come back and bring this back. At this point, it's been so long, you know, if we do absolutely nothing, eventually we'll get to 9,500, but that will not be a win. So for future reference, if, if you could share that, that would be really, really helpful. Thank you.
So President Albridge, your, your point, we did that last year, and we will share that with you. We respect the fact that there's a chipping away at that foundational allowance by foundation. Absolutely, there's no question about that. And so we are cognizant of that, and we are tracking that. We're also in an awkward moment, right? We're right before the official release of the governor's budget to the legislature, so it's a little bit of a limbo land, but we make note that historically, we've underfunded public education over the last several years by billions of dollars annually, and I think that's really to your, to your point, to just put a number on it. It'll be easier to put that number on it moving forward once the legislature passes a budget. We could go backwards and reflect upon the summer, last summer, but I think it makes more sense to push forward.
And I'm not suggesting one way or the other, I'm just saying that for a target, it's, it's got to be a moving target because, you know, it's been almost four years now. So that target eventually has to, to move.
It does. The, the dollar doesn't buy what it once bought.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. McMillan and Ms. Lipton.
Mr. Garan, so how was the $5.5 billion that the state got recently used as far as, did any of that go to teacher recruitment or retention?
Can we just clarify? I just.
The $5.5 billion that came from the feds.
Thank you very much. So we are talking about the three pandemic relief packages, CARES Act, PRESTCE, and ARB.
How much of that went to teacher retention and recruitment?
Well, as you're aware, Mr. Garan, 90% of that was allocated directly to school districts, so there are various amounts that would be used to support facilities in those areas directly to districts, so 90% of that, $5.5 billion, was meant directly to school districts.
Who could have used it for teacher retention and recruitment?
And some have, but they also have a pandemic that they're trying to navigate and wrestle for, and that's what those dollars were intended to be able to do.
Do you know exactly how that $5.5 billion has been spent or is being spent?
We can tell you based on what they budgeted, yes. You got to remember the rule here, the second year of the CARES money, so you've got one, two, and three, as Dr. Rice referred to. Most districts have spent through most of their CARES dollars, but the largest of the two investments were in the first two and three, and those dollars all were fully appropriated until this last summer, so districts are still using those dollars when they're funding public schools.
When, because I think that there's plenty of that money that could have been used, and then people are still wondering how it's being, how it has been used or will be used, I think they could use it for retention and recruitment. When we add federal money and other monies, how much do schools in Michigan get, I mean, isn't it well over $9,500 when you add in federal monies and others?
If you calculate it as per pupil, yes.
Okay. I think even Detroit and others get well over like 13,000 or something in that range.
There is that spectrum of based on the needs of students who know, so if you have a larger concentration of students with higher needs, give more federal funding, plus the per pupil will be larger than others.
And as I've said in the last, I don't know, eight months, you know, requests by whoever looking for more funding kind of falls on deaf ears when we look at how, how parents are being treated, how the politicization of classroom through CRT and other, other strategies of the left are being implemented, the mask, the harm done by masking of, of kids, the, the outrageous amounts of money that parents are being charged for FOIA just to know what their schools are doing, you know, the, just the, the real hostility of many in the education community towards parents. I don't know why anything should be passed quickly until those, those issues are addressed. I would hope that, that there wouldn't be a supplemental that goes through until we stop the politicization, which is also causing teachers to leave, and so we know that for a fact. So I, you know, we know that these funding, these so-called funding studies are all done by organizations that never show a, a state has good funding. I mean, they, it's pretty well-known what their result is going to be before, before it's even published, because you could just look at what they do, they're organizations that come up with, they need more money. I will say that funding per pupil is going to increase just by math, because as the hostilities and these politicization continues, people are pulling their kids out of school, so the denominator is going down and will continue to go down. So, you know, the number, the amount per pupil is going to increase just because you're, you know, the, the system is pushing families to start homeschooling or finding other, other methods because of, of all the problems that are being, are not being addressed. So, yeah, I, I hope that the legislature will make sure those are addressed before any kind of supplemental, because throwing additional money into a system that is hostile to many parents and is becoming, becoming more and more politicized is not something that I think would be wise.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. President Albridge and Ms. Tilly.
I think Ellen was not.
I beg your, I beg your pardon. You're right. Ms. Lipton, Ms. Tilly for a first bite at the apple, and President Albridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation. I would just like to clarify a few points. As the sponsor of the bill, when I was in legislature, that kicked off the initial study that resulted in 2016 School Finance Research Collaborative, I would like to clarify and point out has been some research that it was a study that was initiated by the legislature. It was voted on in a bipartisan, by the legislature. Many of members who are still in the legislature today, so the notion that there's some number that dropped from the sky is a mischaracterization of the report initially. Secondly, the legislation that called on the costing out study to take place over a two-year process was tied to an expectation by the legislature. So, for anyone interested who would like to read the statute, it was based on outcomes. So, again, the purpose of the study was to give people information on what are the true costs to educate a child in Michigan based on the standards set forth in the school code as to what a child who graduates from Michigan should know. So, the dollars are based on outcomes that the state board and others have adopted as to the Michigan Merit Curriculum. So, again, the notion that the money that was, or the funding that was set forth in the study and confirmed multiple times over multiple years dropped from the sky is an That is some historical background because it's always important to know where we came from so that we can know where we're going. So, that's on that piece. My question right now is, as to the teacher recruitment issue, which is reaching near crisis proportions in this state, in your opinion, do we have the infrastructure in place so that if, in fact, the legislature does do the right thing and pass the supplemental appropriation, do we have the infrastructure in place to deploy those dollars quickly in time for the upcoming school year? Because that is something that concerns me, that, once the money gets appropriated, do we have, do the school districts have the tools in place to actually make a dent in this teacher shortage problem?
So, thank you, Ms. Lipton, for sharing that history with us. You point out the funding of the first school finance study was appropriated by the state legislature, of which you were a member. In fact, you're not the only person on the state board who was a member of that state legislature. When the state legislature approved that funding for that first school finance study, which would ultimately be the second state finance study, because the Upjohn Institute study would be effectuated in the interim, that would be the second state funding study once it got finished. The third state funding study, as you may recall, was former Lieutenant Governor Calley's state funding study associated with special education funding. The fourth was the School Finance Research Collaborative study. The fifth was the Michigan State University study. The sixth was the EdTrust Midwest study. So, only one of the six was done by people who are, what was generated, at least initially, by people from outside of the state. It is true that the study to which you refer ultimately would be done by people from out of the state, but it emanated from the 148 people in the state legislature. To your question about infrastructure in local school districts, the sooner that the legislature acts, the sooner that local school districts will be able to move on some of these more substantial initiatives, which is why we need relatively quick action. There's infrastructure that will need to be set up in individual school districts with respect to Grow Your Own programs. Some local school districts, to Mr. McMillan's earlier point, have existing Grow Your Own programs inspired by the work of the Michigan Department of Education and their Office of Educator Excellence, inspired by work that's been done organically and locally. But some do not, many do not. I've been drumbeating around this theme since I was state superintendent. More and more superintendents are engaged in this way. Grow Your Own programs for students to become teachers, Grow Your Own programs for support staff to become teachers, but there's a lot of work that needs to continue to take place. And we don't need a budget being approved with the recruitment and retention initiatives in the deep summer such that we miss another year's worth of impact for our schoolchildren. Ms. Tilly, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly to you, and then to President Albridge.
There's a lot of data to support that where the per pupil funding needs to be here in Michigan and that we have not been there. There's a lot of national studies that says how much it costs to educate a child. So, we have plenty of data. I think a lot of us have done a good job at this table, beating that drum of saying we need more funding for our schools. And I'm very happy with the fact that our governor is increasing it. I'm very happy with you beating that drum and speaking with the governor so that we can get more funding for our students. There's no cure, you know, one answer for every school district. There's no one answer for every student. So, we can't say that because one group or one population of parents or students get one thing, that that's the cure for the whole state. When I was in undergrad and when I was in grad school, I worked as a substitute teacher at least 15 schools, Wayne, Oakland, and McComb County. I got a chance to see firsthand our students not having enough books, our students' needs not being met, the infrastructure in some of the schools that needed to be fixed. We know that there's an issue in Detroit where they can't, they don't have the money to allocate towards infrastructure because of everything that happened in Detroit. Every district has different issues and different needs. This can help them to meet some of those needs, and they get to decide. That's the great thing about it. We don't have to sit here in an ivory tower and decide for them what happens in their district. They get to decide what their needs are according to the superintendents, the students, the principals, the teachers, the parents, they can, the school board members locally, they can all come together and decide what needs to happen to make sure that the children in those districts are adequately taken care of, not us. It's not us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. President Albridge.
So, that was a great segue into what I was going to say, which is, when you throw a question out to the world, somehow the world sends an answer back. So, I already have the answer. The updated number from SFRC is $10,421, which is an $831 increase in the recommended per pupil amount based on inflation. And then a reminder that there were two areas that the SFRC still needed to be studied. One is transportation. The other is capital needs. And I believe the transportation study is underway now, and hopefully, funding will be available for capital needs because we know that there's, that is one area that we do not have equity in this state because it is based on local dollars in many cases. So, I just wanted to share that the answer is...
And that's how much per student?
$10,421.
I mean, and what was that, an increase? I'm sorry.
$831.
So, a couple of notes to that because if we're going to go down the rabbit hole, we might as well go down the rabbit hole. So, that's base funding. That does not include the needs over and above of that base funding. As Mr. Karan noted, different children have different needs, different needs, different costs. So, a child with disabilities, with a disability is going to have more expensive needs, and we need to fund those needs. A speech-only child with disability, that's to say, a child with a speech disability is not going to have the same cost to his or her needs as a child who may have severe cognitive challenges, for example, or severe emotional challenges. I share that because the SFRC talked about not simply the base funding to which you refer, but those needs over and above the base funding, poverty, disability, English learner status, and the three areas that needed additional study. You point out transportation and capital, but also higher poverty, not simply run-of-the-mill, but more substantial poverty. And each of those three areas needs to be additionally studied, noted the SFRC. So, I just share that. I think this is a rich area, no pun intended. There's a lot of detail in it, and quite frankly, the fact that we're having this conversation is terrific because 10 years we were not in this state. 10 years we were pre any sort of school finance study in the state of Michigan, and there has been an increased awareness that we underfunded public schools and public school children for many, many years in the state, and we reaped what we sowed. Ms. Tilly and then Ms. Snyder.
I forgot to add to you. I wanted to add to special needs children, definitely. There's also children that suffer from the achievement gap. When children in urban areas graduate, they're four years behind their counterparts in the suburbs. They need additional assistance. Then they also have a lot of learning loss. We talked about learning loss during COVID, but there was always learning loss in the urban areas. There's learning loss every summer. So, we, they need additional funding. It's not just, let's go to school, we've been on track all of these years. We're talking about people that have been behind for years. They need additional support. Thank you.
And just to note, different districts have different needs as well because if you're transporting children in a densely populated area, your transportation costs are very small compared to what they would be in a broad, sparsely populated rural jurisdiction, in which case your transportation needs, costs are going to be greater. Ms. Snyder to you.
Finally, my point of order. Thank you. Let me start with special education. I think we need to switch the way that we fund special education. Oftentimes, what you hear frequently is money should go to schools, but in this particular unique area, money really needs to start to go to students so that an impact can truly be seen with those dollars and tracked in a unique way that uniquely relates to, I'm going to say it one more time, the unique needs they have. So, I do think that that is something we need to see in the future, setting that particular study aside in this overall discussion. As far as current funding and inflation goes, there's been a lot of discussion about it, but there are other numbers that need to be infused into the discussion. So, even with the $10,421 per inflation, which will return to inflation and the impact that it's had on these numbers, we have districts in the state of Michigan that relate to the unique needs that you guys are all discussing in depth that still receive that much more in base funding. We have districts that are getting $8,200 or less than base funding. And then even for those districts that are getting more than the base funding that Cassandra is suggesting relates to the inflation that we don't see in this budget that has been presented. There's federal funding above and beyond that and grant funding that, as Tom mentioned, gets us to the point where we're looking at somewhere $18,000 to $20,000 per pupil in those districts. So, your discussion is repetitive, it's circular, the money is there. It's the districts that aren't even getting the base funding that the SFRC recommends, let alone adjusted for inflation. So, we continue to hear discussion of those districts that have the unique needs don't have it. There are tons of districts that don't even have the base funding that this old study suggests, and it's not the districts that we're talking about. So, we'd have to really put that on paper and see it to understand it. We keep hearing the same narrative, but the numbers and the actual facts don't actually line up with that narrative. Further, when it relates to inflation, we've seen inflation rise by 6.9% in the last year and since 2018, or I'm sorry, 20. We've seen inflation in our state 6.6% in the last year. So, who's in charge of that inflation? What's actually happening there? And that's something Biden has repeatedly said he's going to do something about. So, I'll just say there's money within that problem he's trying to handle. So, before we even go there in terms of adjusted for inflation, you have to wonder, where is that inflation coming from? Under what leadership are we experiencing that? And what are they willing to do about it? So, those are the questions I would ask that. But lastly, legislature, you've referred to the legislature not acting, not acting, not acting. What is the inference in that discussion? And what are they, are they asking for needs? What is the discussion they're having with you? What is, essentially, what are they saying? What is the negotiation they need to experience? What topics matter to them within this entire discussion? Because you can hear they're not acting, but what's behind that? Where is that beat? Where is the pulse of that conversation?
So, a few things. First of all, the minimum foundational allowance in the state is $8,700. There is no district with a lower minimum foundational allowance than $8,700, to which you add additional funding, 31A funding, special education funding, federal dollars, Title I Part A, IDEA, and, 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 and. So, I make that, that's number one. Number two, we've spoken extensively about the needs of a wide range of districts. We invited ISB superintendents from the Western UP to share their needs in a sparsely populated rural corner of the state. So, I don't think that we ignored the needs of rural jurisdictions. Moreover, I'll be meeting with a group of ISB superintendents and LEA superintendents, higher education leaders from the UP tomorrow, so we're certainly not ignoring the needs of our rural jurisdictions in this state. So, that's one thing, too. It's not that I said that the legislature wasn't acting. You said that. What I said, rather, was that the legislature does need to act. We know that it can act quickly when it wants to. We're asking it to act quickly now on recruitment and retention initiatives. We believe these initiatives require precipitous action, quick action, and not delayed action such that we don't have an impact on next school year. We've had a number of conversations with state legislators. We'll continue to have those conversations with state legislators now that the governor's budget is going to be released tomorrow. There'll be hearings on the budget. There'll be one-on-one and small group meetings. We're hearing good feedback across the aisle. feedback across the aisle on many of these initiatives. I mean, the proof is ultimately in the pudding, Ms. Snyder, and we'll see what the pudding looks like. But I can tell you that we've had some very, very positive feedback on recruitment and retention initiatives from both sides of the aisle. I think there's a real strong understanding that we're no longer in a buyer's market for teachers. We're in a seller's market for teachers. And when you're in a seller's market, you have to incentivize in a different way than when you're in a buyer's market. Yes, back to you.
I'm not suggesting that we are ignoring any particular area of the state, just making inferences from the numbers that are here. With that said, also not opposed to the discussion or the importance of educator recruitment and retention. I haven't heard you tell me what the conversation is sounding like with the legislature. I'm hearing you repeat that we need to act right away, right now. But I want to understand what conversation they're having with you because you're repeating your side or our side, if you will. But what are they saying about this? Why have they not acted yet? Why do you, let's have that discussion. If there's been a number of conversations, what does it sound like from their end?
If it really turns on the individual legislator, we're getting legislators that are very supportive of particular initiatives relative to recruitment and retention. For example, we have a recommendation before the state legislature to address the reciprocity law, to make it easier to remove regulatory barriers, to come into the state with a teaching certificate from another state. And what we'd like to do, what we've encouraged the legislature to do, is to amend state statute, to amend state law, to permit a person with a certificate in another state with three years of positive evaluations from another state to come into our state and get teacher certification without having to take the MTC. We think that there's a value to that. We think that if you've demonstrated your capacity to teach, you've got your certificate, you've got three years plus of positive evaluation in another state, we want to invite you in with fewer regulatory barriers than more. Each of the last five years, you may recall, we've had more than 1,000 people be certified with their initial certification from the, from another state. Last year was 1,326 people. 31% of our people whom we certified to teach in the state were initially certified elsewhere. That's good news, but we can do better than that. And in the short term, that's a big deal. In the short term, that's a big deal. Now midterm, long term, that's not the answer. But in the short term, when we're trying to address a pipeline and a profession now, that is a big deal. And when I was up in the Western UP, a part of the state that you know well, this was one of the things that we discussed, that we discussed fairly frequently. I recently met with Senator McBroom and Rep. Marking from the Western UP, and they shared much the same thing, that reciprocity is important, and reducing those regulatory barriers would be a help. They're supportive of initiatives to improve the teacher pipeline up north, where we talked about it being not precisely, but too much like a one-legged stool, too dependent on Northern Michigan University. So again, it really turns, there are 148 members of the legislature. Everybody has a different lens and a different set of reflection. And everybody has a different reflection on our recommendations, and by extension, the recommendations that the governor has as well. But I can tell you that in general, people appreciate that it is not 2005. It is not a buyer's market anymore. It's a seller's market, where we have to incentivize in a different way the seller's market.
So hearing and understanding that reciprocity is an important thing from your perspective and many others, what is, what are their ideas of recruitment and retention?
Thank you. Ms. Kelly and then Dr. Pugh and then Dr. Pritchett.
I just wanted to quickly.
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. I did not mean to.
You know what? It's okay. Don't worry.
No, Leah. I did not mean to ignore our Teacher of the Year at all. Let's go, go.
No worries.
Ms. Kelly, Ms. Porter, Dr. Pugh, Dr. Pritchett.
I just wanted to quickly speak on the case with inflation. I thought that was really good that Cassandra brought up that point about adding in the cost for inflation. That's something we hadn't discussed before or thought about before. And it is very important. And as far as Nikki's comment about inflation, that's macroeconomics. Inflation's going to happen every year. The circumstances with COVID caused an increase of inflation to be this high. But it's because of the government spending. Under the Trump administration, we had to spend a lot of money. People needed unemployment benefits. They were giving out checks to help people because they weren't working. So all of that helps to play a part. We had the issues in the supply chain, and then you have supply and demand, which helps to increase inflation. So I don't really want to get back and forth into the national politics of it, but just to explain more so of that's what's going on with inflation right now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter, Dr. Pugh, Dr. Pritchett.
I just wanted to share that hearing this presentation gave me real hope for the potential and the possibility of the future for public education in this state. As someone who has walked in a school for the last 16 years and watched resources strip away and creative ways of continuing to provide the best education for students because we didn't have the dollars, watching specialists not be replaced, and people working across districts and in different positions because we didn't have the finances, seeing what is presented here does provide a lens of hope for me in a way that I haven't felt in a long time. The last two years specifically, when we're talking the last 10, were already challenging. The last few years of the pandemic have been the most challenging of my career, and I would argue any educator would say their careers. And knowing that retention and recruitment are the top priorities, Dr. Rice, thank you for saying that that needs to be done urgently. The retention is critical. I know Board Member Lipton shared her concern. I am also very concerned about the retention of teachers and knowing that we need to do that, and we need to do that as quickly as possible. In all the places I've been this year already, educators we have in this state are dynamic, caring people. But we need to make sure that we are using both lanes with both recruitment and retention, giving them both the same weight, because I fear that if we do not act soon, that we're going to be in our darkest days to come. So I don't mean, and on a.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh, Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you, Kyle, for this presentation and for breaking things down for us in the way that you have. And of course, we're excited about this bold step forward in making sure that Michigan moves itself up from the bottom as to how we fund our schools. I'm like you, Ms. Porter. I don't, I'm going to probably get right into the middle of a downer note. And that's in talking to educators and hearing that, yes, the funding is definitely needed. We know that. But we also know that there is a deliberate attack on Michigan's public education system. And we know that there is this push to dismantle our public education system. There's a disrespect of teachers and just a total devaluing of the profession that we know that we also have to address immediately as well. And some examples that I would give, you know, when we talk about curriculum, censorship, requiring teachers, telling teachers what they can and cannot teach, asking teachers to over-report. I've talked about safe and healthy school environments, and we've talked about this hopefully being an opportunity for us to create that in these schools. But we can talk about policy, where we're talking, where we've talked at this table about evaluations and evaluations that are of teachers that's driven by just too much testing. So I think that those are things that we will also continue to discuss, and I want to make sure that educators in Michigan know that those things have to also be acknowledged and addressed as well. And, you know, I hope that we will all continue those conversations as we're also talking about adequate funding of our teachers and different ways that we're looking to retain them. But basically, making sure that we're continuing to undergird them and support them in this environment that we're in, where they feel that they are under attack. You have teachers that feel like they're being blamed for a pandemic. And it's not their fault, you know? They're going into schools. They want to teach. They want to be inside of school buildings. But they want those school buildings to be healthy and safe for their children. So I just wanted to bring those points up as we were talking. And some of the conversations that we've had definitely reminded me of some of these issues that I continue to hear from educators.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend the governor, the governor's staff, and obviously Michigan Department of Education. This is a great start. I have been an observer and actively involved in the budget process for years, and so I understand that this indeed is the first step. And there will be lots of conversations, lots of meetings, et cetera. I am pleased to know that the initial conversations, especially about teacher retention and teacher recruitment, are positive. I think the time has come. I think everybody realizes that. My only request at this point is as the reams of papers start to come out with all of the details and then other give and take on the budget, that maybe if we could be kept in that loop so we're aware of the fact that, and I'll use GSRP as the example, you know, where are we at with GSRP as far as what's the final number possibly going to look like or where, you know? And I know Senate Fiscal Agency usually does a nice job of giving us the different columns, you know, the House is here, the Senate's here, the governor's here. Even those types of updates, I'm not saying the department has to do them, would be a request that I would have. It just helps us, I think, stay current so that we are aware of where we are in the process as it goes through from this point forward. So.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. President, President, President Ulbricht.
I'll be very quick.
Ms. McMillan, this lifted very briefly, and then we'll, then we'll, no filibuster please.
Absolutely not. Just a, there are a few questions that were raised at the table, and I think some of these are actually addressed in the SFRC. So I would like to recommend that, since it has been so long since we've had a presentation, maybe we consider bringing them back to update the board.
Very good. Thank you so much. Ms. McMillan, you.
Since the chairman called me out as one of the members of the legislature in 2014 that the legislature voted to fund that study, I was there. It was about 4 o'clock in the morning when the vote occurred, maybe 5 o'clock in the morning on the final day. Republicans needed a two-thirds vote, so they needed Democrats in order to put a large tax increase on the ballot, which of course I opposed. So the Democrats basically called whatever they wanted. They chose this study. They wrote the law. I remember Dylan from the West Side, representative, was writing it such that only one firm could actually qualify. That was how detailed the legislation was. And he knew, and based on the fact that since 2001, every study that this Ogland Blick put out always came to the same conclusion, more money needed to come out of the pockets of taxpayers. So he knew, and the Democrats knew, that what the study was going to show, they had the, you know, the Republicans that were supportive of this tax increase for roads on the hook, and at 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, that's when it was voted on. So I just wanted to clarify the history there. It was a foregone conclusion how that study was going to go. And anyway.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lipton, to you for a brief closer.
Yes. We actually voted on many things at wee hours of the morning that were put on by the majority party. And having served on appropriations, I was also forced to vote on several hundred-page budgets with basically nothing more than a minute or two's notice. So that is the life and plight of a state legislator. And that is what those of us that ran and served signed up for. On the issue of just a little more historical perspective.
Brief, brief historical perspective, please.
Yeah, I would just like to share that when I was in the legislature, when we saw some of the greatest cuts to the school aid fund that the state has ever seen, we saw a mass export of teachers to other states that poached our teachers. And I would say that our teachers are some of the best prepared in the country. I would put our teachers up against the teachers of any other state. And if dramatic cuts force many of our teachers to leave, it stands to logic that dramatic increases in teacher recruitment and retention would bring them back. And we would be proud to have our excellent teachers back as many of them were forced to leave the state in the lean years.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton.
Mr. Chairman, one really quick question. One really quick question.
If I could, please, I'd like to present my agenda. Ms. Lipton, thank you for sharing that. I agree with you. I'll put Michigan's issues up against any in the country. Go ahead, please.
$100 to $500 million ask in relationship to the resolution last week, last month, on top of the $2.3 billion in this budget.
Great question. So the governor's budget includes many of those teacher improvements and retention recommendations that we shared. It also adds to it retention bonuses, of which we are enormously supportive, retention bonuses for teachers and support them. So thank you very much for that clarification. I think that was really important. Board, that was a very rich one-hour conversation. Thank you so much. Ms. Verant, thank you. The next agenda item is approval of the proposed standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school science teachers. The proposed standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school science teachers were presented to the State Board of Education on October 12, 2021. These standards would replace current Michigan standards for the preparation of secondary teachers in the areas of integrated science, biology, chemistry, earth and space science, and physics. This update would inform program development and continuous improvement efforts in Michigan's educator preparation. Board approval of the standards is being reflected today. If there is anyone in the room who would like to offer public comment on this specific item before the vote, please complete a public participation form and give it to Ms. Snyder immediately. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delphus Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Support, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, and Ms. Darcy McMahon, Higher Education Consultant in the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, State Board of Education. We appreciate the opportunity to return today. We were here in the fall, in the month of October, presenting our proposed standards, which are specific to science, middle grades, and high school teachers. Our focus and intent today is to share with you the outcome of public comment, which is a process of this proposed process. We also will share next steps to occur upon board approval. Joining me today are Director Leah Breen and Higher Education Consultant Darcy McMahon. And I turn it over to them at this time. Ladies.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for including this work on the agenda today. We are here to share with you the proposed revised standards for the preparing teachers of middle grades and high school science. We present these teacher preparation standards seeking approval by the State Board of Education today. There are many reasons why science teacher preparation standards were determined to be the next critical step in our decision process. Ms. Ethan Pugh on the slide. The work is part of an ongoing The work is part of an ongoing process that began with revision of the certification structure into grade bands. Important MBE initiatives such as understanding and meeting the needs of the whole child, a focus on equity and goal number seven of Michigan's Strategic Education Plan have also driven a need to revise these standards to line up with these goals and initiatives. Finally, the current standards are almost 20 years old, and Michigan K-12 science standards and the NSTA teacher preparation standards have both been updated in that 20-year window. A subcommittee of stakeholders developed a structure for the science endorsements based on consideration of the Certification Structure Committee recommendations, alignment with those MBE goals and initiatives, and reviewing input from across the state. For each grade band, all teachers who are prepared to teach science will earn a science endorsement. Those endorsements can then be paired with additional optional endorsement in a science Multiple perspectives were represented by the 36 stakeholders shown by the blue pins on the diagram. These directly contributed to the standard revision process. These stakeholders have roles and perspectives, including PK-12 science curriculum instruction leaders, professional education organization representatives, educator preparation faculty and science content faculty, current teachers, multiple geographic regions, and all types of districts and institutions. There were also 33 reviewers across Michigan, represented by the red pins. These reviewers came from all across the state, including the Upper Peninsula, and even included five science leaders from other states. So there were 36 stakeholders plus 33 reviewers, the total of 69 educators directly involved in developing these proposed standards. There are several shifts represented in the proposed standards. First, they are practice-based, meaning that these proposed standards integrate both science and engineering practices and also core teaching practices. They are three-faceted to align with our three-dimensional K-12 science standards. The three facets of the proposed standards, science teaching practices, core knowledge for teaching science, and guiding principles for science teaching, are intended to mirror the three dimensions of the K-12 Michigan science standards of science and engineering practices, disciplinary core ideas, and cross-cutting concepts. Because research shows that teachers teach the way they have been taught, the three-faceted approach is intended to enable the programs to provide three-dimensional science learning experiences for teacher candidates. They are also equity and whole-child focused. They infuse this equity and whole-child principles throughout. In the framework facets, there are elements of them throughout. For example, in the guiding principles, there are two for equity, one for whole child. In the science teaching practices, equity is woven throughout, and in the core knowledge, all domains, both of them are woven throughout. Finally, the specialized content knowledge needed for teaching, for teaching science is directly aligned to the content of the K-12 science standards. This tight focus on the content needed for teaching helps ensure well-prepared beginners and enables programs to narrow the content scope to allow for expedient program completion. Some expected programmatic impacts of this include more consistency in preparation for all science teachers and clear alignment of content and pedagogy to the Michigan K-12 science standards. Since we first presented these proposed standards to you in October, there's been a period of public comment in which all interested parties were invited to provide comment on the proposed standards via survey or to provide a letter of comment. There were 60 respondents to the survey from 20 counties across the state. Four different letters were also submitted and were signed by 23 individuals representing 18 different education organizations, such as the Math Science Learning Network, Michigan Science Teachers Association, and the Michigan Association of School Super, Administrators, thank you.
Yep.
As can be seen on the graph, the survey respondents represented many various roles and perspectives, including teachers, teacher educators, administrators, curriculum experts, and parents. Of those responding to the survey, 35% have experience working with grades nine, 12, while 30% with, with grades six through eight, 23% with grades three through five, and 7% in higher education, and 5% alternative secondary programs. This majority of respondents are directly working with the middle grades and high school As you can see, the response was overwhelmingly positive to these proposed standards, with 82% of respondents saying that they support or support with only minor revisions this draft set of standards to prepare science teachers. No respondents said that they were against the proposed standards. Some of the positive comments included noting the benefits to districts, the likelihood of well-prepared beginners, the alignment to the Michigan K-12 science standards, the focus on equity, identity, and sense-making, and being, and student-centered reasoning instead of fact memorization. From one of the letters comes the following quote, "These standards will provide the guidance needed for teacher preparation programs, faculty, and staff to create coursework and learning experiences for their students, so they will be well-started beginners. The structure of the new standards emphasizes facets of teacher knowledge that are crucial for entering the teacher workforce, especially when considering the requirements of the Michigan science standards." Of the survey respondents who answered, 97% felt that these standards were well or mostly aligned with the Michigan K-12 science standards. Some of the comments included from a teacher, "I like that the college learning and training will match the standards that we teach in classrooms instead of just the content," and another, "The proposed standards are wonderful for addressing the complexities of teaching science according to the vision of instruction presented in a framework for K-12 science education." 94% of the survey respondents felt that these standards truly represented what beginning science teachers need to know and be able to do. Some comments included, "They will help new and incoming science teacher, students, prepare for the job at hand, not just prepare to be better at a subject." And as a proposed standard for the preparation of teachers addresses the complexities of teaching and science, and learning science using three facets. These facets move beyond the core knowledge that teachers of science must have to include the essential practices for teaching of core knowledge and the dispositions required to meet the needs of the variety of learners in their classrooms. There were three main themes in the comments submitted in the survey, support for the standards, suggestions for revisions, and current preparation and system challenges. We've already heard about many of the supporting comments. Many of the suggestions for revisions were thoughtfully proposed, minor suggestions such as to reorder some of the standards, minor shifts in wording, or needing clarification on things such as whether two standards were similar enough to both be needed, and on the use and need for the three-faceted types of standards. The result of these minor suggestions, several tweaks were made, particularly to ensure that the committee's intent that teacher candidates are prepared to address equity in their classrooms and schools is clear. Some of the more significant revisions suggested were around ensuring the appropriate level and grain size of the standards. As a result, some significant revisions were made to ensure that, that physical science and physics and chemistry standards are much more appropriate depth and grain size. Several others of the comments in this category were thoughtfully considered and responded to by the committee, but were bound to require little to no changes to the standards. For example, there were some comments regarding topics such as evolution and climate change. In these cases, the committee determined whether the content questions were written in a way as to be open to all learner ideas, evidence, and scientific argumentation, and also that they reflected the current language in other SBE approved documents, such as the K-12 Michigan science standards. In the category of current preparation and system challenges, some concerns were expressed about the length, length of teacher preparation programs, the placement of science teachers, and the certification and endorsement structure. Each of these comments were addressed by the committee but resulted in no change to the draft standards. If these standards are approved, the, the MBE and Office of Educator Excellence, Educator Prep Consultants will then begin providing communications, support, and assistance for teacher preparation programs to introduce the standards and revise their programs accordingly. Educator preparation programs will be able to submit applications for revised teacher preparation programs starting in November of 22 through April of 2024, which will be reviewed by teacher educators from around the state. The first candidates will, would enter new science teacher preparation programs as early as November of 2023. Thank you so much for your time today, and please do contact us with any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chapman, Ms. Breen, Ms. McMahon, for your presentation. We appreciate that. If we could have a motion to move the standards, get the motion on the table and then begin the discussion, have a motion, please.
Someone.
Dr. Pritchett with the, the motion, Dr. Pugh with the, the second. Any discussion associated there with. Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to go through these pretty quickly. On page 51, number eight, "Learning about your students, cultural, religious, family." So, teachers need to learn about their, their students' religious background?
Well, this comes from the, this is infusing our core teaching practices, which are already adopted in use, and so we've infused these in here. These are already requirements of programs. And in particular, really understanding your students and their background and where they're coming from helps you to meet them where they are and build on what they know and, and begin to, so that's, that's the basic background idea of that.
Okay. And then, and also their families, so learning about their family. Anything that's not kind of off, off limits, or just you can ask any, you know, you should know everything about the family, or?
Well, I mean, just building that relationship is really important to the learning that happens in the classroom.
Okay. Now, it says about, and then eight A, "Make intentional connections through the use of talk moves to encourage students to share with the class." What is a talk move?
That's a, yes, thank you for asking. That's a, a particular way of asking questions to help students to probe their thinking and elicit their understanding. So that's a kind of, it's.
Okay. And then B says, "Ensure tasks which include assignments, assessments, and activities are equitable for the diversity of students in your care." So what would be an inequitable assessment or an inequitable activity?
Well, if we were to ask students to complete something online as homework, and they do not have access to, to technology at home, that would not be equitable for all students.
Okay, I mean, is that, so that's all you're talking about, is just technology, there's nothing else?
Oh, of course, there are many things. Students have many different kinds of differences.
Can you give me another one?
I can give you one. Asking students to select a, a book that aligns to the topic and do their own independent research when perhaps they don't have access to a library or a bookstore from which they could attain that material.
And an inequitable assessment? What would?
Perhaps asking them to create something at home, which is very common in science, go home and create a project that meets these standards in order to demonstrate your learning, and they don't have the tools or materials in order to be able to complete that project at home, and that is intended to be used to assess their learning when they return it to the classroom.
Okay. Create oppo, D is create opportunities for students to engage in diverse sense-making building on their community histories, values, and practices. What is, now, we're talking about science here, so sense-making building on their community histories. What does that mean?
Well, all students, because of their, their experiences, because of their background, they have their own ways of approaching a problem or bringing their own understanding. And it's really important for a teacher to understand that and be able to build on that in a way that really respects and develops and deepens both their understanding and their own identity and their own way of being.
So a concrete example of that might be for some of our students who are from mining communities in the Upper Peninsula, when they begin to study geology and rock formation, may have a very different base understanding and way of approaching it than an individual who has, does not have that same community experience where that is a way of life and a way of living.
Okay. Moving on to page 52, Core Knowledge Facet Elements, CKA 3, "Appropriate and engaging learning activities that foster an inclusive, equitable, and anti-bias environment." So what would be a biased environment?
So I can speak to that one, too. So for example, there has been research that indicates that in science classrooms, teachers often call on male students much more frequently than female students. So being aware of that propensity and ensuring that you're engaging students equitably in a science lesson would be an example.
On that same page, CKB, number six, it talks about example, let's see, "Align, alignment of instruction and assessment strategies that address students' prior knowledge and alternative conceptions to support instructional decision-making and navigate tensions between alternative ideas and ways of knowing which may be derived from various cultures and canonical science ideas." What is a canonical science idea?
So these, these would be science concepts that are, that have, that are more accepted, that have been, have had a lot of evidence and research and study, that have passed through beyond theory to more of a law sorts of, kinds of things. So, you know.
Can't be questioned.
Pardon me?
Shouldn't be questioned.
Well, I mean, do we still study the law of gravity? Yes. Do, are we still learning more about it? Always in science.
Right. And there was a, there was a prior idea of gravity or of many things that was probably considered canonical.
Absolutely.
And then, and then was challenged.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. And then on page 54, I couldn't figure out some of this stuff here. "Science for all, teachers are guided by the value that, let's see, is it one, yeah, that all students have a rightful presence in science. A, science is a culturally mediated way of thinking and knowing and may contribute to and/or disrupt social inequities over time." I mean, and then B, you know, what does that mean? So, "Science is culturally mediated, knowing and may contribute to, and/or disrupt social inequities."
I mean, different cultures approach the learning and the understanding of science differently. And we, as teachers, we can bring our own understanding and our own cultural understanding of how science should be done, and that can, that can be challenging for students who explore science in different ways, also fully, you know, perfectly acceptable ways. And so there are, it's, it's bringing this understanding that culture impacts our understanding of science and science of culture, and that they, they work together.
And then B, "A social justice orientation propels teachers to recognize and address inequities manifested in classroom practices." What does that mean?
Again.
What would a social justice orientation for teachers mean?
Would you like me to do it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. So when we think of, in speaking, I am a science educator by trade. So, when we think of, in speaking, I am a science educator by trade, teaching in the classroom, especially a diverse classroom, it is the teacher's responsibility to be very well-adapted to what social justice is and to make sure that the students that they are contracted to instruct and educate know that they are understanding of that social justice realm and that they take the initiative and the time as the educator in the classroom to make sure that the students have voice and choice in that social justice mechanism of learning science in the science classroom.
So they need to know what social justice is. What is it? Can you tell me?
Social justice would be the variance of diversities of those students in the classroom, so, and so that, earlier you asked about science for all, science is for all, and so those students should have the equity and access of being socially adept and know what social justice is even in the subject of science in the classroom.
And then, finally, I've got, you know, there are things that I couldn't find in this, I found bits and pieces of some other, some other elements and principles that should be in there, but like, is there in here anywhere about how often science experts of the past were sometimes proven wrong?
There are aspects of the nature of science, which I think is kind of what you're getting at there.
Okay.
They're kind of woven throughout, but they are in the core knowledge facet in particular, I believe it's core knowledge A or B, that you'll see a lot of examples of that.
Okay.
And it's part of, if you look at the guiding principles, for example, this community knowledge building and the disciplinary literacy aspects of four and five are really all about the nature of science.
And then, is, are there, about, how often theories about man-made climate or weather impacts have changed over time, when it was, you know, experts always said, for a long time, it was global cooling, and then they all said, it's going to, no, we're wrong, it's global warming, and then they said, no, we're wrong with that, it's climate change, and is it addressed where they've just been wrong, you know, things change?
Yeah, the language that we use about topics like that is that we consider all of the sides of the evidence and all the different evidence, and that those are, that students are able to make sense of that for themselves.
Okay. And then, as far as the importance of not censoring challenges to current scientific theories, is that kind of dealt with in there?
I think, again, that's part of the nature of science. We wouldn't censor challenges.
I mean, society certainly does now, but...
Based on evidence, right? And I think that's the key aspect, that any evidential-based sense-making or discussion or that's grounded in investigative evidence, that's what we're looking for.
Okay. And then, how about where, the idea that health and climate modeling can give bad results? You know, I mean, just bad input can create bad output.
I mean, again, I'll find that particular standard for you, but I believe that we have kept that pretty open.
Okay. Yeah, I think I might have found it on page forty-one on that one. It touched on it, but I wasn't sure.
Thank you. If you'd bring it to the conclusion, because we do have other people who like it.
Well, this is important.
I know it's important. I know it's, but other people's questions are, too.
We've got plenty of time. We've got all day.
We do.
How about how science's research is often influenced by politics and large corporations like Big Pharma? I mean, is it kind of talk about that?
No, I don't believe that that is something that we've really, but we do talk about generally the influence that science has on communities and communities on science understanding and how those work together.
Okay. I guess I can try to wrap it up for now, but how often there is a revolving door of personnel among government regulators and government authorities and the corporations that they regulate? Is that addressed at all?
Again, that's not really in the, that would sound more like a political understanding piece that is important, but I'm not sure that maybe might, well, more in the realm of social studies than in science. These are more about empirical investigative.
Well, I mean, that influences how science is perceived and kind of what the science is often is dictated by people who have ulterior motives.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm sure those topics come up in classrooms all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. Just piggybacking on to a number of things that have been said, so, we've talked about social justice in science, science for all is diversity of students, they vary. We've talked about probing religion, probing how students think, meeting them where they're at, building on what they know. So, if we really practice this, then my thought process is this, we would understand that many students believe that, you know, creation science is real, so if they can offer evidence based on that, are they able to pass a class based on these standards?
So, remember, these are teacher preparation standards rather than K-12 student standards, so these are helping teachers gain the knowledge and skills they need to be able to impart the K-12 standards to students.
So, but you did say teachers teach the way they're taught to teach, so we're teaching them what to teach, right? So, if they're then going and teaching, you know, science standards, my question is, given social justice, given diversity, and our commitment to it, right, given meeting them where they're at, building on what they know, asking for evidence, can a state-of-Michigan student present evidence that creation science is real and pass a standard-based science class in Michigan?
A K-12 student?
So, I think there's probably more of a question that's appropriate for the individuals that work with the K-12 student standards rather than the individuals who have created the teacher preparation standards. I think that there, I mean, we have teachers that believe different values, creationism versus evolution, and these, we're not preparing teachers to assess students on their religious beliefs, we're asking them to demonstrate their knowledge on the standards that are present here, which are focused on science investigatory constructs.
So, are they allowed to teach creation science if they believe in it?
I think that's a local decision as to what is in the local curriculum versus the teacher preparation standards.
I'm just saying, I mean, we're talking about teacher preparation standards for science, so I think these are really important things to consider, especially as we say, social justice, diversity, and probing them in what they think and their religion. If we're going to teach teachers to teach like this, we need to understand whether or not we're going to actually welcome and embrace the diversity of our students, and the way we test them, not just the way we teach them, but the way we test them. I know we're talking about teacher preparation, teachers' teaching, so I think that these things, you know, really pondering whether or not that's something we foster, that social justice aspect and diversity, do we follow through with it with a large group of students that may not necessarily traditionally fit within the standards that we have?
I would hope that an outcome of these standards is that teachers are able to understand that when we do science, when we learn science, we don't divorce ourselves from the whole person, so people bring their culture, their religious beliefs, those aspects impact and color what we understand about science, and that within the realm of science, we need to be able to look carefully at what is the evidence, where's the clearest evidence, and be able to discuss those things freely to come to understanding. And whether or not we all come to exactly the same shared understanding, we need to be able to say what the evidence, where the evidence is strongest. I hope that helps.
Well, I mean, I think you're saying where the evidence is strongest according to the standards that you're presenting, right? Not necessarily according to the view or the perspective or the person, which is the whole concept of there's a variety and a diverse set of students, because you could teach and test according to where you think the evidence is strongest, or I could teach and test according to that, or we could truly teach a diversity of views and perspectives.
I think it's more about whether or not the candidate or the student can make a scientific argument, can make a scientific explanation using the evidence that is presented.
Or taught, right? Anyhow, we don't have to keep going back and forth, but just a thought to put out there.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Albridge.
So, I appreciate the questions. Just a reminder, the standards are approved by the State Board of Education, so if we wanted to create standards that said, you know, throw the whole damn thing out, we could certainly do that. I don't think it would be wise, but we could do that. However, I think that at this point, what I would like to do is make a motion that we call the question.
Okay. So, we have a motion to call the question. Do we have a second to call the question? Dr. Pugh seconding the motion to call the question.
Discussion?
Discussion, the need to call the question?
Yeah.
Sure.
I still have a, I have like one other question that I'd like to ask.
Okay. I don't think, I don't think anyone's going to object to your additional question, seeing no objection, chair not looking for any objections. Why don't you ask your last question?
Yeah, last question. In the standards, I was asking about, are certain things in there, and you were saying yes and no. How about, how has a quote-unquote "established" science been shown to be incorrect and harmful in the past? Is that kind of thing in there?
Again, there is a strong emphasis on considering all the evidence to make scientific argument and understanding the history of how that has been, has happened in the past would definitely be part of that, building that understanding.
Thank you. And then, as far as any discussion on the motion, is there anybody else that has questions? I guess that's a valid question to ask.
Right. I mean, I'm...
In point of order.
Please.
My understanding is when you call the question, it's been seconded, you have a vote.
No, that's sort of tabling. I don't think for a call the question, you can talk about the impact of a call the question. Call the question. I believe it's debatable.
Right. You asked to ask your last question, you did. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, it seems like we're ready to vote. Could we please withdraw the motion to call the question and move right to a vote on the standards themselves? Could you be amenable to that? Very good. So, this is a motion to, on the standards, we had a motion to approve, we had a second motion by Dr. Pritchett, a second by Dr. Pugh to approve the standards. Marilyn, a roll call vote, please.
Is there a discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, please?
Is there a discussion on the motion?
You've just had a thirty-minute discussion on the motion. It was already moved and seconded, and you've been having a thirty-minute discussion on it.
Just point of order, I'm just going to point out, when you call the question, the motion cannot be discussed or debated.
Very good.
As soon as you hear, you...
We appreciate that. That will help us in the future. Thank you very much. There will be a future. Ms. Snyder.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. It is twelve sixteen, board presenters, we appreciate your present votes and your responses for the questions for the board members. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is twelve sixteen, we will reconvene at one fifteen, okay? Enjoy your lunch, we will see you shortly.